Ready?
Yep.
Who's the first witness? Good morning, everyone. Morning. Can I have your attention, please? Morning. Sorry for the tardiness. We're still trying to tie up some loose ends. We're gonna start. Thank you. We have established a quorum of committee members. This is a public hearing and committee to hold. The purpose of the public hearings is to take testimony on resolutions 150307 through 150316, which makes various board appointments to the Center City District and Old City Services District, and bills number 150375, 150376, 150377, 150378, 150379, and 150380, and resolution number 150390, all related to the Gallery Mall project. We will begin our testimony on the resolutions, make appointments to the various boards, and Mr. Christmas, would you please read the title of those resolutions?
Resolution 150307. I'm sorry. Again, resolution 150307, reappointing Peter Rothberg to the Board of Directors of the Old City Special Services District. Resolution 150308, reappointing Cheryl Barr to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. Resolution 150309, reappointing Harvey Spear to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. Resolution 150310, appointing Leo Adomondo to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. Resolution 150311, reappointing Chris Terlezi to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. Resolution 150312, reappointing Ernest Jones to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. Resolution 150313, reappointing Harold Epps to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. Resolution 150314, reappointing Larry Howard to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. Resolution 150315, appointing Peter Soans to the Board of Director of the Center City District, and finally, resolution 150316, appointing Julie Coker to the Board of Directors of the Center City District.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christmas. Our witnesses are Paul Levy, Center City District, and Joe Ritchie, Old City Special Services District. Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please state your name for the record and submit your testimony.
Joe Ritchie, Chair of the Old City Special Services District.
Good morning. You can proceed.
As stated, my name is Joe Ritchie. I'm the Chair of the Old City Special Services District. I'm here in support of the resolutions as follows. Resolution number 150307, reappoints Peter C. Rothberg to the Board. Mr. Rothberg is a commercial real estate broker at Caldwell Banker in Old City and has served on the Board for five years. In that time, Mr. Rothberg has served on Old City District's Clean and Safe and Economic Development Committees, and he currently co-chairs our registered community organization zoning meetings. Mr. Rothberg has served as the District Secretary and is currently serving as Treasurer. Resolution number 150308, reappoints Cheryl Barr to the Board. Ms. Barr is a resident of Old City and has served on the Board for seven years. Ms. Barr has chaired our marketing committee for several years. Under her leadership, the district introduced the production of an annual brochure promoting local businesses to visitors, undertook a rebranding effort, revamped its website, and hosted a night market and the first annual Old City Fest. Ms. Barr is playing an instrumental role in the creation and implementation of the district's new marketing strategy, which we expect to unveil later this year, and she now sits on our executive committee. Resolution number 150309, reappoints Harvey Spear to the Board. Mr. Spear is owner of Easy Park, which has multiple locations in Old City, and has served on the Board for seven years. Under Mr. Spear's leadership, as the Chair of our Clean and Safe Committee, the district has generated significant savings on cleaning services, has hired a security team to patrol the area on weekend nights, and has introduced a radio program that allows bar management to interact directly should the need arise. Mr. Spear has previously served as Chair of the Board and currently serves as Vice Chair. Resolution number 150310, appoints Leo Adomondo to the Board. Mr. Adomondo is a developer who has been active in his own property in Old City for a number of years. He is currently developing the Short Corner Apartments at the corner of Third and Market. In advance of his confirmation by this body, Mr. Adomondo has attended Board meetings where his voice and perspective have been a welcome addition to the conversation. Accordingly, I support the nomination of these members to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Mr. Levy?
My name is Paul Levy, President of the Center City District, and I'm here to testify in favor of resolutions 150310 through 150316, renominating four existing Board members to the Center City District Board. Harold Epps from PRDW Services, Chris Terlezi from First Niagara Bank. Both Mr. Epps and Chris Terlezi have joined us here this morning. Larry Howard from Preet and Ernest Jones from Ernest Jones Consulting. Each of those are for new five-year terms. We're also appointing two new individuals to the Board, Peter Soans from SSH Real Estate and Julie Coker, who is the Senior Vice President of the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau. I thank you very much for your consideration of these appointees.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions of these witnesses by members of the committee? Thank you very much. Anyone else wishes to testify on these resolutions? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown for questioning.
Yes. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Thank you very, very much for the listing of the Board members. Paying a lot of attention to the percentage of women. What I need to know with the Center City District is the following: the total number of employees at the Center City District.
Total number of employees, direct and contract, are 187.
And of that... Let's break it down in, I guess, three divisions. Those that are on the ground that we see daily around City Hall and parts of Center City, that number would be what?
All right. Well, there are two separate groups. Our cleaning team, which represents 124 individuals, 76% African-American, 12% Latino, 12% Caucasian, 35% women. Our community service representative, security staff, 44 individuals, 55% African-American, 36% Caucasian, 9% Latino.
And the top tier, how many employees at the top-tier executive level of the organization?
We have a total of 25 senior management staff. Among those individuals, 53% of managers are women, 25% are minority.
So define "top tier." That includes X number, the executive director, president, of which you are?
Correct. Vice presidents and managers of multiple divisions, Parks Division, Marketing Division, Physical Improvements, et cetera.
So of the now 24 VP and managers, how many are African-American, how many are women?
53% are women, 25% are minority. That's... It's actually 23% African-American, 2% Latino.
So... I'm a visual learner. I need to see a table of organization with that breakdown.
Be glad to provide that.
Okay. And so with the... Old City Special Services District. Total number of employees?
We have three full-time employees.
And the breakdown is what?
They are... All three are white male.
All three are?
All three are Caucasian male.
You've given details about your Board. I'm looking for your testimony. Does the Old City Special Services District receive any dollars from the city?
Well, we are a... We receive the overwhelming majority of our funding through the tax assessment on commercial property owners.
And so does the Old City Special Services District receive any dollars from the city of Philadelphia?
Additional doubt? No.
Okay. How long have you been there?
I've been a member of the Board for five years.
Five years?
Yes.
Thank you. How soon can we get the table of organization, Paul Levy?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question.
How soon can we receive the table of organization submitted to the Chair?
Tomorrow or Monday? Is that be fine?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
The continuation, what Councilwoman Reynolds Brown asked, how many members are on the Board of Directors of Old City?
There are 19 Board members.
And what is the makeup of those Board members?
I would have to...
Right now, I see, what, two women and 10 men, one, two, three, four, five, six?
No, that's not accurate. I can... I would have to provide that information. I would say of the 19 members, roughly a third are women.
And it's broken up racially as well?
There are... There are two African-American members, including myself. The rest...
Out of 19?
Out of 19, that's correct.
Do you feel that represents the city properly?
I would not say that represents the city properly.
All right. What do you... Is there a plan of action? Or, I mean, because it seems we're reappointing people. I mean, now's our chance, and you just came out supporting all this. So under your testimony, you support all this. So what do you think we should do different to try and reflect the city a little better?
Yeah. I mean, I think the process as it stands, the three of the... Of the four that I'm here supporting today are existing longstanding members who have been very active. The fourth is a member who has been active prior to his appointment. And I think our general process is when there is a vacancy on the Board, which happens relatively infrequently.
Are there term limits or something, or is this like lifetime appointments?
There are... There are five... There are appointments with five-year terms, of which each Board member is allowed to serve two. So...
So there are term limits. Great.
So, yeah. So it is a 10-year term limit. That's correct.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. President. Thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? Any other witnesses on these resolutions? There being none, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Next, we will have testimony on the bills and resolutions relating to the Gallery Mall project. We would like to call up first... I would like to ask Mr. Christmas, please read the titles of bills 150375 through 150380 and resolution 150390.
Bill number 150375, An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property, Director of Commerce, and Other Officials of the City to Execute or Approve Various Agreements and Other Matters by and Among the City, the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, and others relating to the redevelopment operation and maintenance of properties located in the north side of Market Street between 8th and 11th Streets in the city, and commonly known as the Gallery Mall, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 15037 sits in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on the portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the city plan and vacating certain subsurface portions of Market Street East of 9th Street, 10th Street, between Market Street and Frankfurt Street, and 11th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street, and by striking from the city plan and vacating certain aerial portions of 9th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street and 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street, and authorizing the conveyance of such struck and vacated areas, together with certain areas previously struck and vacated, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 150377, authorizing the construction, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments into the right-of-way of Market Street, Filbert Street, 11th Street, 10th Street, 9th Street, 8th Street, and authorizing the assignment of certain rights with respect to an overhead pedestrian bridge above Filbert Street west of the house line of 9th Street to be assigned, all under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 150378, approving the Ninth Amendment of the Redevelopment Proposal for the Market Street East Urban Renewal Area, including the Second Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan, which provides an ally for the rehabilitation of the gallery at Market East as a first-class mixed-use retail center. And bill number 150379, amending section 14502 of the Philadelphia Code entitled CTR, Center City Overlay by Adding New Subsection Entitled Market Street East Retail Area Relating to Accessory Signs, amending section 19... I mean, 14906, entitled Market Street East Signs Regulations Relating to Accessory and Non-Accessory Signs and Making Related Changes, all under certain terms and conditions. And resolution 150390, approving certain amended, restated lease and redevelopment agreement between the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority and PR Gallery One Limited Partnership for 833 Market Street, 901 Market Street, and 905 Market Street. That certain amended and restated lease and redevelopment agreement between the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority and Keystone Philadelphia Properties LP for 1001 through 1019 Market Street. That certain amended and restated lease and redevelopment agreement between the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority and Keystone Philadelphia Properties LP for 1025 Market Street for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Market Street East Urban Renewal Area, including certain air rights and other property included in the aforementioned amended and restated lease and redevelopment agreements, authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute the aforementioned amended and restated lease and redevelopment agreements with PR Gallery One Limited Partnership and Keystone Philadelphia Properties LP as applicable, and to take such actions as may be necessary to effectuate the aforementioned amended and restated lease and redevelopment agreements. And bill number 150380, creating the Gallery and Market East Tax Increment Financing District, being the area generally bounded by Filbert Street on the north, 8th Street on the east, 11th Street on the west, and Market Street on the south, including certain improvements located therein, and approving the project plan of the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the redevelopment of the Gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District and making certain findings and declarations, all in accordance with the Tax Increment Financing Act, being the Act of July 11, 1990, Public Law Number 465, Number 113 as amended, and authorizing the Director of Finance and other offices of the city to execute documents and do all things necessary to carry out the intent of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. Our first panel, we will call up, I guess, all of the individuals relating to the gallery development. We will have Alan Greenberger, Joe Cordino, Charmaine Matlak-Turner, and I will also ask if Brian Abernathy and John Grady take a seat on the side of the witness table to be available. Good morning.
Good morning.
You can proceed.
Morning. Okay. Morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. I'm Alan Greenberger. I'm the Deputy Mayor for Economic Development, and I'm here today to testify in support of a package of six ordinances and one resolution required for the comprehensive redevelopment of the gallery at Market East. I'm joined in support of this legislative package by... On my right, by Joe Cordino, and on my left, Charmaine Matlak-Turner, on behalf of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Investment Trust, otherwise known as Preet, and their partner Mace Rich, Brian Abernathy, on behalf of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, and John Grady, on behalf of PIDC and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development. In June 2009, the Philadelphia City Planning Commission adopted the Philadelphia Market East Strategic Plan, identifying Market East as one of the most vital and important areas in Center City, Philadelphia, and identifying strategies to restore Market Street as Philadelphia's Main Street. With reinvestment in Independence Mall and the expansion of the Convention Center completed, and transformational redevelopment of the south side of Market Street under construction, the gallery is the largest remaining piece of East Market Street's ultimate revitalization. The gallery was developed in two phases in 1975 and 1982, under an innovative public-private partnership required to finance and construct what was one of the most significant urban renewal projects of its time. The initial transaction structure required public access to transit facilities, but also left the public sector with obligations of ownership, including significant ongoing financial liability for the building's structure, major systems, and common areas, without the revenue to pay for them. These obligations have significant deferred investment associated with them today and continue forward as much as 69 additional years by contract. This transaction represents a unique opportunity to reinvent the entire gallery complex while also leveraging significant private investment, releasing the public from past and future liability for both operating expenses and capital improvements, enhancing access to public transit, and promoting economic opportunity through construction and ongoing operations. Excuse me. This project represents new investment of $325 million that will result in a complete makeover and revitalization of the gallery at Market East that will benefit the Philadelphians who have worked in or shopped at the gallery for many years, as well as attracting many new residents and visitors to East Market Street from the city, region, and beyond. The development team, in addition to this administration, share City Council's belief that those who have worked to make the gallery such an iconic feature of Philadelphia's past should share in the success of its future. To that end, I can report today that thanks to the dedication and hard work of SEPTA and Councilman Squilla, SEPTA is committed to accommodating all 14 of the remaining kiosk vendors in the regional rail concourse at Jefferson Station, formerly known as Market East Station, on a temporary basis for the duration of construction. And I would also note that Preet is contributing the hard cost, approximately $300,000, to create the vendor carts that are necessary for that operation. Upon completion of construction, the vendors will have the opportunity to participate in the homegrown retail program being proposed by Preet and Mace Rich for selecting vendors, kiosk vendors for the new gallery. We're here today to request City Council's consideration and approval of three areas of support for this transformational project: financing, ongoing maintenance of public spaces and access to transit, and the lease and conveyance of the property. Let me take each one of these in turn, beginning with the financing. This new $325 million investment in the property is in addition to $250 million previously invested by Preet and Mace Rich to assemble the various leases and parcels that make up the property from 8th Street to 11th Street. Of the total $575 million investment, 484 million, or 84% of it, is being made by the private development partnership formed between Preet and Mace Rich. The balance of the project funding, $90.5 million, or 16% of the total, is being proposed from state and local public sources, maximizing private investment in the project and taking into account public sector responsibility for substantial deferred and future investment in the gallery. To support this project and the $90 million of public investment, the Commonwealth has committed $15.5 million, and application is pending for an additional $20 million for total anticipated Commonwealth investment of $35.5 million. The remaining $55 million in public investment is proposed from the Tax Increment Financing District, or TIF, being considered by Council today. Development and operation of the project during the 20-year term of the TIF is projected to generate more than $435 million in tax revenue, including nearly $200 million in new direct tax revenue benefits to both the city and the school district of Philadelphia generated from real estate, UNO, wage, BERT, sales, and liquor-by-the-drink taxes. These incremental revenues are driven almost exclusively by increasing occupancy and sales in the revitalized space, together with a new tenant mix that includes significant food and beverage growth. These revenues include, number one, $126 million to the school district from base real estate taxes and incremental UNO and liquor-by-the-drink taxes. In the first full year of operations, the school district's annual revenues will increase from the current $1.6 million to over $5 million per year. Overall, this represents a net gain to the district of $94 million during the 24-year term of the TIF. Second, $181.7 million to the city from base real estate, sales, BERT, and wage taxes, plus incremental wage and sales taxes. During construction alone, the project will generate $3.6 million in construction wage taxes. These additional wage and sales taxes represent $98.5 million net gain to the city during the 20-year term of the TIF. And third, $127.5 million of total BERT, real estate, and 1% of sales tax will be contributed to the project through the TIF fund, funding $55 million in net present value that has been proposed to be invested in the project. Second, in addition to the public financing to support construction, the city will continue to make payments to maintain and improve public access to Jefferson Station, the Market-Frankford Line, and PATGO Lines. Under the current agreements, the city has significant liability for making payments to improve, operate, and maintain the public areas throughout the gallery complex. Currently, this payment obligation is $2.1 million, which escalates by as much as 5% annually. This agreement, the one that's in front of you today, will reduce the city's commitment from 61 years to 43 years, cap the escalation at 3% annually, with payments beginning at the current $2.1 million obligation. These changes result in savings of $187 million over the existing terms. Payments will be made by the city to Preet and Mace Rich via a payment agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development. The third and final area of consideration for City Council today relates to the leasing and conveyance of the property. There are currently three leases between the Redevelopment Authority and various Preet entities for portions of the gallery that have various terms, the longest of which runs through 2084. We're proposing to make all three leases co-terminus with the longest lease. Upon construction completion, the Redevelopment Authority will be authorized to convey ownership of the property to Preet and Mace Rich, resulting in Preet and Mace Rich ownership of the parcels from the retail portion of 8th Street in the former Strawbridge through 11th Street. In return, excuse me, Preet and Mace Rich have guaranteed the completion of a project totaling at least $300 million, and they will release and indemnify the city and the PRA from all past and future liabilities associated with the authority's ownership of the property. The amount of these liabilities outweigh the value of the property being conveyed and, including the proposed local investment. Recognizing that Preet and Mace Rich are publicly owned companies and flexibility may be required, the lease and redevelopment agreement pre-approved certain modifications the lease and redevelopment agreement pre-approved certain modifications, such as certain changes to the plan, certain assignees and subtenants, and leasehold mortgages to institutional lenders. Under the agreement, PRET must begin construction within 18 months of signing the lease. They have indicated publicly that they hope to begin construction as soon as possible. While construction is estimated to take two years, they have four years to complete the project. Any default of these terms could result in PRA taking possession of the property. The PRA, working with and following the city's lead, will approve plans for the project, and any material difference to those plans, they must be approved by PRA and the city. All existing public art will remain or be relocated at PRET and Mace Rich's expense, and $1 million of new additional public art will be commissioned as part of the redevelopment project. And so, in conclusion today, we're requesting City Council's support of the six ordinances and one resolution that are now before the Committee of the Whole, which are necessary for this transformational project to move forward. Three of these ordinances need to be amended slightly, as I will discuss, and the amendments have been circulated. The first is Bill 150375. It authorizes execution approval of various agreements related to the gallery renovation, including termination of existing mall maintenance arrangements, sublease of the bridge over the 1,000 block of Filbert Street, acceptance of an easement to maintain public access to transit in perpetuity, and to make certain payments for renovation, maintenance, and operation of that easement. Bill Number 150376 authorizes the striking, vacating, and conveyance of certain city-owned properties related to the project. I request that Bill 150376 be amended to attach the exhibits defining the areas to be stricken from the city plan. These exhibits were inadvertently deleted from the original ordinance and need to be reattached. Bill Number 150377 authorizes variance encroachments onto the public right-of-way and further authorizes assignments of the rights of the bridge over the 900 block of Filbert Street. Bill Number 150378 amends the Market Street East Urban Renewal Area by permitting development consistent with the property's underlying zoning classification. Bill Number 150379 amends the city's zoning code with respect to signage for the gallery. I request that Bill 150379 be amended to make a slight adjustment to the permitted areas for the accessory signs. Bill Number 150380 creates the Gallery at Market East Tax Increment Financing District. I request that the Bill 150380, yeah, be amended to specify that the base real estate value is fixed as of the effective date, and base real estate taxes will reflect current tax rates through the term of the TIF. And Resolution Number 150390 approves and authorizes execution by the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority of certain amended and restated lease and redevelopment agreements. The proposed renovation of the gallery will be transformational for Market Street, and we're thankful that the project has received the approval of the School Reform Commission, the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, and the Philadelphia City Planning Commission. This project generates significant benefits to the city and the school district of Philadelphia. Construction alone will create over 2,000 jobs, and the resulting increased occupancy and revitalized tenant mix will add over 1,000 permanent jobs. Over 20 years, tax revenues for the project are projected to exceed $435 million, of which more than $307 million in base and incremental taxes will be retained by the city and the school district. An economic opportunity plan, which you'll hear about more in a moment, has been put in place to ensure maximum participation in this project for minority and female-owned businesses, as well as local residents and veterans, both during construction and in permanent operations. The developer is also committed to operating the gallery in accordance with the city's first source and living wage requirements. I respectfully ask that you favorably vote Bills Number 150375, 76, 77, 78, 79, and 80, and Resolution 150390 out of committee, and request that the rules of council be suspended to allow for first reading of these bills at the next meeting of City Council. Now, Mr. President, if you'll allow me, Joe Cordino would like to now outline the project, followed by Charmaine Matlock Turner, who'll review the various elements of the economic opportunity plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Which one?
We're gonna do this and then this.
Yeah, you might take up all the questions. We'll spread them around. Both of you are gonna testify, am I correct?
Yes.
Why don't you all just give your brief testimony, and then we'll just ask questions?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Alan, and good afternoon, Council President Clark, members of City Council. My name is Joe Cordino. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Pennsylvania Real Estate Investment Trust, who has partnered with Mace Rich to renovate and operate the Gallery at Market East. I'm here today to testify in support of Bills Number 150375, 150376, 150377, 150378, 150379, 150380, and Resolution Number 150390. Pennsylvania Real Estate Investment Trust, or PRET, is a publicly traded real estate investment trust, traded on the New York Stock Exchange, headquartered in Philadelphia. It's one of the first equity REITs in the United States, has a primary investment focus on retail shopping malls and open-air centers. The company's portfolio currently consists of approximately 30 million square feet, including 32 shopping malls and six open-air centers. These properties are located in 12 United States, primarily in the Mid-Atlantic region. PRET's the largest enclosed mall operator in the region. We own Cherry Hill Mall, Moorestown Mall, Plymouth Meeting Mall, Woolly Grove Mall, Exton Square Mall, and we manage the shops at the Bellevue, in addition to the Gallery at Market East, which we own in a joint venture with Mace Rich. Mace Rich is also a publicly traded real estate investment trust, founded in 1994, headquartered in Santa Monica, California. Mace Rich is the company's third-largest mall owner. They operate 55 shopping centers with approximately 55 million square feet under management. Together, we bring extensive experience with mall renovations and urban development. Our broad-based retailer relationships uniquely qualify us to deliver the proposed project to the Philadelphia marketplace. PRET acquired its interest in the Gallery 1 in 2003, and Gallery 2 with the former J.C. Penney Building in 2004, and since that time, we've assembled the remaining parcels and now control over 1.1 million square feet of space between 8th and 11th Street. This assemblage provides the opportunity to reinvigorate the mall by creating a retail experience that is unique to the region and sets itself apart from other urban retail projects, in an environment that's inviting, easily navigated, consistent with the renderings that you see displayed before you. To put this in perspective, we've been working on this project for 12 years. The six ordinances and resolutions before you will allow us to perform a comprehensive redevelopment of the gallery and correct financial and legal structures that were required to develop the gallery initially, but now stand in the way of its revitalization. We intend to create a bright, new, contemporary space that attracts shoppers and reconnects Market Street to inviting storefronts, sidewalk cafes, a new streetscape, and high-tech signage and graphics. Major project elements include renovation of the facades to create a greater connectivity to the streetscape, contemporary interior finishes, and a new glass entrance cube at Ninth and Market, and to really upgrade the vertical transportation in all major building systems. In short, we will create an inviting pedestrian experience from 8th to 11th, where all Philadelphia residents and its visitors can shop, dine, work, and be entertained. The total investment in the project when completed will be $575 million, comprised of $250 million in acquisition costs and $325 million in construction costs, including demolition, renovation, tenant work, furniture fixtures and equipment, and related professional fees. Together with Mace Rich, we have committed over $234.5 million towards those projects' costs, which is in addition to the $250 million already invested in the property, for a total private investment of $484.5 million. Public investment is expected to be $90.5 million, of which $55 million will be in the form of tax increment financing, and the remaining $35.5 million is expected in grants from the Commonwealth. The proposed $55 million TIF is not guaranteed by the city, it's guaranteed by us. The TIF is solely dependent on our credit to obtain financing. Our substantial private investment represents 72% of project costs, or 84% of total investment. Public investment represents 28% of project costs, or 16% of the total investment. To be clear, this project can only move forward because of our control of the parcels and successfully obtaining the extension of the lease terms with the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority and the public financing package that is before you today. The project renovation is scheduled to take approximately two years. Once completed, we will continue to operate the mall, including preservation of public access to regional transit. In consideration of the overall project, we have agreed to cap and reduce ongoing payments from the city. Annual payments will start at $2.1 million, approximately the same level as due under the current agreements, but will escalate at 3% instead of the current 5, a total present value of $58 million through 2058. This represents a reduction of 18 years of payments. We have worked closely with the city's Office of Economic Opportunity to execute an aggressive economic opportunity plan that maximizes construction employment and contracting for disadvantaged businesses, and also incorporates a homegrown retail pilot. I'm joined today by Charmaine Matlock Turner, President and CEO of the Urban Affairs Coalition, who will manage implementation and oversight of the economic opportunity plan, a copy of which is incorporated as an exhibit to the TIF bill. Before turning it over to Charmaine, let me close by thanking you for your time and asking that you favorably vote Bills Numbered 150375, 150376, 150377, 150378, 150379, 150380, and Resolution Number 150390 out of committee. I certainly will remain and can answer any questions you might have at the close of testimony. Charmaine.
Thank you, Joe. Good afternoon, Council President Clark, and to members of City Council. My name is Charmaine Matlock Turner, as Joe said, and I'm the President and CEO of the Urban Affairs Coalition, which has been hired by PRET to manage implementation and oversight of the economic opportunity plan with respect to the redevelopment of the gallery at Market East. The Urban Affairs Coalition has worked for many years in coordination with the city's Office of Economic Opportunity, City Council, and private developers to design and implement project-based economic opportunity plans on major projects throughout the city. We have helped owners achieve economic opportunity on more than 150 projects, totaling more than $7 billion since we began this work in 1982. These owners directed more than $2.5 billion to businesses owned by minorities and women, and the minorities and women who worked on the projects as well. We are proud to be an integral part of this work, a part of the gallery project. The economic opportunity plan has been executed by the city's Office of Economic Opportunity. The plan is in the typical format required by the city and includes the following construction-related goals and ranges. In construction subcontracting, the goals are 25% to 30% participation by minority-owned businesses, 5% to 10% participation for women-owned businesses, and good faith efforts for the disabled and veteran-owned businesses. In professional services, the goals are 15% to 20% participation with minority-owned businesses, 10% to 15% participation with women-owned businesses, and good faith efforts for disabled and veteran-owned businesses. With regard to apprenticeships, the goal is to engage 50% minority, 7% female participation in these opportunities. For journeyman opportunities, the goal is to support 32% minority and 2% female participation. And there has been a goal set of 35% participation for city residents in construction. In addition to construction-related goals, PRET has agreed to create several innovative programs that encourage leasing to local and minority entrepreneurs and the employment of youth and Philadelphia residents in the stores. The homegrown retail pilot will offer leasing options to independently-owned Philadelphia retailers through PRET's Specialty Leasing Group and provide professional mentoring services. This initiative represents a continuation and expansion of the innovative efforts that PRET adopted prior to the project through its kiosk program. The Food and Beverage Minority Entrepreneur Initiative will reserve specialty food space for Philadelphia minority food vendors drawn from local retail associations. And finally, PRET will work with tenants to hold a job fair and coordinate with local agencies to create a pool of local residents and opportunities for employment of Philadelphia youth. The developer has fully committed to these goals, and my experience, the construction-related goals are ambitious but achievable, and the post-construction goals represent a unique entrepreneurial opportunity for local businesses. I will remain with my colleagues here to answer any questions that you might have as it relates to our role in this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One quick question, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues. The public space issue, we have a pretty long schedule with respects to the city's contribution to the maintenance of the public space. Can you kind of talk to me, this is owned by SEPTA, am I correct?
Well, it depends on which public space you're talking about. The one that is, I think, the subject of the bills in front of you, excuse me, is mostly concourse, the existing concourse that's in the gallery now, as well as multiple ways up from it to the street. They connect two transit nodes. One is the SEPTA Regional Rail Concourse, Jefferson Station.
Right.
And it actually connects to the gallery concourse fundamentally in two big places. And then the other connection is in the other direction. It's effectively walking under the sidewalk along Market Street towards the 8th Street Subway and the Patco Line.
And we're paying, what is it, a schedule of payments by the city of Philadelphia over a significant period?
The payments are intended to both support the renovation and maintenance of the part that's in the gallery itself, which is, think of it as the basement concourse, the lower-level concourse where all the shops are.
Who owns that?
Right now, that is owned by the Redevelopment Authority and is not under lease to PRET. All the public areas are not, right now, under lease to PRET. This arrangement will basically take everything.
So why don't, so, and we will continue to maintain ownership?
We will, no, we will have an easement. And it's an easement in perpetuity to make sure that you can always get into the transit concourses.
But why, why would that be our interest with respects to access?
Well, I think...
And then you have, it's, I mean, you're gaining access to SEPTA and access to the developer's complex, so why should we make the payments with respects to the make? Why is it?
The payments for the easement in perpetuity ensure that people get to do the things that they're doing now, which is, a lot of people come out of the transit, walk through the gallery to get from one end of the city to another.
I understand that, but I'm saying, why would, I mean, this is the benefit, it's the benefit to the city generally.
Yeah.
But it's the benefit to development and SEPTA, because those are the primary users as it relates to customers and...
Right, and that's a benefit for the citizens and visitors to the city as a whole.
I guess my question is, why are we paying for that? Because I'm assuming that this payment is scheduled, long payment is scheduled.
It's a long payment.
Those dollars are coming out of the general fund.
The dollars are coming out of the general fund, they come through public property. We have, we are under contract right now to make those payments for another 61 years.
Right.
At a higher escalation rate. We think in exchange for the easement, that benefits the city as a whole, we need to continue to make those kind of payments, but we have reduced both the escalation cap as well as the number of years. So there's a considerable savings. It's still a long period of time, but the easement is important to the citizens of the city. city.
To the sense of minimizing what was a bad deal, this is my words, not yours, from day one when we essentially gave this site to the development team, but okay, I won't go there.
It's a better deal than we have now.
Yeah.
By a lot.
Yeah, it's a pretty bad deal. Okay, I'm going to recognize Councilman Good, and I'll come back with a couple of other questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
Morning.
A few areas of questioning. The first is, the CFO of the school district testified on Tuesday that the original TIF proposal presented to them took more money from the school district than this proposal. Please explain that.
We had proposed originally that some of the use in occupancy taxes that are legally TIF-able be considered for inclusion in this project. We had a discussion with them, they didn't like that idea for understandable reasons, and so we backed that out. The only thing that is being TIF now are their portion of the real estate taxes.
Were you also going to TIF the liquor?
No, you can't, actually, you can't TIF liquor by the drink. That goes to them automatically. Sorry?
So it was just that one tax?
It was just the one tax.
And how much money was that?
I think, let me see if I remember my numbers right, that would have increased the net present value of the TIF from $55 million, which is what it is now, to $72 million.
And so, for the record, did the project need that money or not?
The project does need the money, and what the adjustment we made is in the backend payments for the easement.
So the project didn't necessarily need the money from the school district?
Project needed the money one way or the other, but we took it off, we took some of it off the school district's plate and put it back on the city's plate.
That's a good thing. Thank you. The next question is, what portion of this project will have to comply with the city's living wage and benefits standard? I see in your testimony, since developer is also committed to operating the gallery in accordance with the city's first source and living wage requirements. What does that mean in terms of the actual legislation, in terms of what's built into the legislation, and what developer is willing to sign and dotted line in terms of?
Well, the first source applies to everything in the gallery, both Preet as an entity, but also all of the tenants. And we are in the process, working with UAC and Philly Works, setting up the mechanism to make that happen.
The first source is now a part of the economic opportunity plan?
That's correct.
Per legislation, which just passed in the last few months, so shouldn't that first source requirement be incorporated into an amended economic opportunity plan?
If we didn't do that, we will do that, but yes, it is part of the plan.
And so it should be part of...
Yes, and they will be signing documents to that effect.
Okay, and the living wage requirement?
Living wage requirement, our understanding of it is that the living wage requirement applies to the developer, because the developer is the direct recipient of the benefit that's being provided by the city. Our understanding is that it does not apply to the tenants.
I believe there were amendments to the code that says it applies to tenants with 25 employees or more.
If I'm looking at the right paragraph here, it certainly talks, the council recognized that this could have a material impact on small business, so it did exclude businesses under 25 employees, under $1 million in revenue, and...
But it does apply to tenants of those that receive financial assistance?
It does, yes.
That is what the law says.
That's right. It says, it says, "The person or entity receives an intended material benefit from the financial assistance." It's our belief, and we asked law about this, because we knew this question would come up, that the tenants are not the material beneficiaries of the financial assistance. The assistance is there to make the project happen.
We've amended it since then.
Have you?
It applies to...
We need to see that. I apologize.
It applies to tenants of financial recipients that have 25 employees or more. But beyond whether it applies or not, I mean, we're talking about the quantity of jobs here, 1,400 new jobs. What about the quality of jobs, beyond what may already be required by law? What is the developer willing to commit to in terms of job quality standards, and how would that be put in this legislation?
Okay, I think, Joe, you need to, you need to talk to that. Okay.
We don't want 1,400 poverty-wage jobs.
Yeah, the question, the question that you're asking, and I'm just repeating this to make sure we're clear, the question you're asking is about the applicability of living wage standards to the tenants, who fit the categories of 25 or more and $1 million or more.
The question is, how does the law as it stands apply to this piece of legislation? How is it incorporated to this legislation? And beyond that, how is job quality incorporated to this legislation directly?
Okay, I, as I said before, we don't believe it applies to tenants, we probably have a disagreement about interpretation there that we're going to have to work out.
We don't have to disagree about it, because you can simply write it in, that you actually commit to job quality and make it part of the legislation.
I'm sorry, just say again?
You can actually just write job quality into the legislation. It does not need to be a disagreement over whether the law applies or how the law applies.
Okay.
Your statement was, "The developer is also committed to operating the gallery in accordance with the city's first source and living wage requirements." What does that mean? Is that, I mean, were those just words, or do you mean that there should be job quality, that you're actually going to write it into the legislation? I mean, the 1,400 new jobs, are they poverty-wage jobs, and should we be forgiving taxes if they are poverty-wage jobs?
Councilmen, our perspective and what we meant by that statement, which I believe is your question, is that any employees that Preet hired, Pennsylvania Real Estate Investment Trust, that would be management of the property, marketing of the property, specialty leasing of the property, maintenance, security, et cetera, would be, would be subject to the living wage requirement.
And how many, and how many of the 1,400 jobs are covered by what you just mentioned? Minimal amount?
Oh, I would say, you know, somewhere between 100 and 200.
Yeah, so I'm talking about the other 12 or 1,300 jobs.
Let me answer your question, yes.
So I'm talking about the other 12 or 1,300 jobs.
As it relates to the jobs provided by the retailers, our concern and the reason why, and our interpretation of the agreement, well, let's put our interpretation aside for a moment. From a practical perspective, we don't believe that we'll be able to get retailers to come to the gallery, given the fact that this will be the only location in Philadelphia where they will pay that level of wages.
So, so, let's not debate whether it legally applies, and let's say if it does legally apply, you still would not want it to legally apply? So you don't, you don't want...
Well, it's not a question of want, I don't, I don't think I, I can't force a retailer what to pay their people. They have a choice, and that choice is to come to the property or choose not to come to the property. And I think, I think as Philadelphians, we have to take a step back and realize that it's the sixth-largest city in America. You know, we are terribly weak from a retail perspective. Kansas City, the 37th-largest city in America, has better retail than we do. And, you know, part of what we're attempting to do is to completely transform the retail environment in Philadelphia, and it is, make no mistake about it...
You're trying to do that for poverty-wage jobs?
No, 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 no. I'm trying to do that with fair, trying to do that with fair wages.
What is, well, what is considered fair wages? What commitment are you actually making to job quality for the 1,400 new jobs?
The same level of job quality that they would have at Cherry Hill Mall, or Moorestown Mall, or any other...
We don't vote on that.
I know, I know you don't, but that's the only way I can answer the question.
Okay, so there is no real commitment in terms of job quality for those people employed by the tenants?
Well, there is a...
It's not, it's not built into the legislation?
Yeah, we're not, we're not able to do that. We can't commit for the tenants.
It may actually be the law. So we will debate that, and I will go back and research it as you will, and we will challenge it if you're wrong, but it may actually be the law, so it may not be able to be your decision and strictly your decision.
I'd like to, if you could help us with that and show us anything you have.
Absolutely. Lastly, with regard to the economic opportunity plan, you talk about, in a testimony, upon completion of construction, the vendors will have the opportunity to participate in the homegrown retail program being proposed by Preet for selecting kiosk vendors for the new gallery. Are there specific opportunities for those vendors or not?
What vendors are you referring to for a moment?
The ones that were displaced by, for this project.
Yes, I think, I think if you, this has had somewhat of a, of a long history, as I'm sure you're aware, you know, going back originally, there were 25 vendors in the gallery. We, you know, we determined that it was time to start de-tenanting the gallery, if you will, and at that point, we offered 18 of those tenants locations in our other malls.
My question is...
Yeah, but I'm going to get to your question.
No, my question is actually, is it written to the legislation beyond what's in the economic opportunity plan?
Pardon me, I'll get you an answer.
So if this answers, I'm sorry, if this answers your question, the economic opportunity plan is attached to the TIF, so it is in the legislation.
And my question is, does what's written in the economic opportunity plan...
Right.
...address those vendors specifically? And is there anything else in the legislation that addresses those vendors specifically that's not in the economic opportunity plan?
Not at, no, not at this time. The commitment from them is to give them a shot at being in the mall permanently.
Okay, lastly, Preet's testimony says, "We work closely with the city's Office of Economic Opportunity to execute an aggressive economic opportunity plan that maximizes construction employment." Can someone please explain that statement?
I'm sorry?
Preet's testimony says, "We work closely with the city's Office of Economic Opportunity to execute an aggressive economic opportunity plan that maximizes construction employment." Can someone explain that statement?
Yes, there was an agreement made between the Office of Economic Opportunity and Preet to establish goals for this project.
But those goals are boilerplate goals. They're the same goals that exist in every project. Is that true?
No, not in all cases. I think some of these are more aggressive, but some of them are the same.
I know, I know the numbers, and we get, the 32% minority male, the 7%...
Yeah, those are the same.
So you didn't work closely with OEO to maximize construction employment, opportunity? You put in boilerplate numbers?
No, I would, I would disagree with that. I would say that those, I mean, you can call them boilerplate, those are numbers that we think are achievable, that we use across the board.
The boilerplate numbers may actually be higher than they should be.
Actually, if you remember, there was, I think that there were some goals in other projects, as we had this discussion before...
Absolutely.
About the goals that were more like 50%, and we, I think, consistently found that those were, could not be achieved, or were not being achieved, and so we're trying to set realistic, but...
No, no, these are boilerplate goals.
Well, I don't see it that way.
You can, all you have to do is look at every economic opportunity plan, and 95% to 100% of them will have the same goals in them, and they're not based upon anything other than being boilerplate goals. There's no work being done there to determine how to maximize construction employment. There's no work being done at all, it's just, just putting in boilerplate goals.
Okay, I, I hear you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. She recognizes Councilwoman, I'm sorry, she recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, my, my question is, I know, I think what Councilman Good was, I learned too about the vendors, and I believe that we came to some agreement with first option for previous vendors to go back in. Is that something that we could add in writing to this agreement?
That's for you.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We can add that in.
So then, I guess we would need to put it somewhere in here where we would have the first option, actually in writing, I think, to make the vendors feel better, because I know they're here to testify today also, and we've been working with them on, on other issues and trying to get them another location, and one of the other agreements we made is to have them, have assigned the agreement before a final vote, and I'm hoping that that would happen also. Mr. Greenberger, you, you had stated that the actual savings over the life of the TIF was 187, it was 187 million?
Let me get back to my notes. Now, I think the 100, I mean, there's a lot of numbers floating around here. Yeah, what I had said was that the 187 million dollar number, is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the differential in, in long-term payments between what we are, sorry, what we are responsible now in what are called mall maintenance payments, payments for the ongoing upkeep of the project, that's the ones that extend out 61 years. The 187 represents the savings of that in this current proposal, because it ratchets it back to 43 years.
Right, and the, the payments, have we been making those payments all along the life of this contract?
We've been making payments all along, yep.
And this agreement was made, I guess, in the 70s, middle 70s?
Right.
And it had always been included into our general fund payout?
Yes, it has.
The total TIF seems to be around 55 million.
Net present value.
Net present value. And the, the cost of that impacts the school district how?
Well, here's what happens. If there's no project, the school district continues to get, since only the real estate taxes in question here for them, the school district would continue to get its share of the real estate taxes, approximately $1.6 million a year. With the project done, the, the school district does better, because there are other taxes, particularly use in occupancy taxes, liquor-by-the-drink taxes, John, am I leaving out one? Use in occupancy, liquor-by-the-drink?
And real estate.
And, well, and their share, yes, and the base section, and the base of the real estate that they will get as a result of an expanded, grown project. And so the result is that they will get more like $5 million a year for the life of the TIF versus the $1.6 million, which is the base real estate that's being paid now.
So they will get not less than what they're receiving now through the life of the project?
They get actually substantially more.
And then at the end of the project, do we have an estimate?
Do we have that number, Joe?
At the end of the project, it would be about $12 million a year.
Yeah, it's about $12 million a year versus the five that they would get during the life of the TIF.
All right, at, at this point, so the school district has agreed to this TIF in principle?
They did, we, no, in principle, they voted, they voted approval at their, at their meeting in April.
And of course, to move a TIF forward, we need the SRC approval, correct?
Yes, and that's now done.
And that's done. The future liabilities, which I think President Clark had alluded to, we see that we are saving in 18 years or 17 years less in payments that will hopefully give us additional funds in the future. But the money that's going in there is actually going in to help maintain and, and keep up the open space or...
Well, it's specifically the public easement, which is, which is guaranteed in perpetuity to provide access by the public through the gallery to the transit.
Who, who would maintain that once the agreement is completed?
Preet Mace ritual will maintain it.
So starting in year, I guess it is...
As soon as, as soon as the construction's done, it's their responsibility to maintain it.
The, but they still receive the dollars too?
Yes, they would continue to get the dollars for the 43 years.
And they have to maintain it?
Yes, and those dollars obviously go into helping to maintain that easement in proper condition.
And then at the end of the agreement, the end of the TIF, the, there's no other additional revenue from the city into the project?
That's it. It's the TIF and the ongoing payments.
All right, so as far as, going back to the vendors, we could add, maybe we'll add something into this legislation for first option, so that they know that they will have first option to get in there. We also will additionally ask a temporary location to have a agreement, hopefully before this, this...
You want to get this agreements, all these agreements with SEPTA signed before the final vote on this, on this, on these bills?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. She recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon it is.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Going forward...
And you got it, it's afternoon, okay.
In keeping with Councilman... In keeping with Councilman Good's line of questioning regarding types of jobs, going forward to the administration, it'd be very, very useful for us to see a visual breakdown of jobs, because while 1,400 sounds great, if we don't know what that looks like in terms of scale of opportunity, 1,400 is just 1,400. So, for the balance of any projects like this coming before us, give us greater detail on what those 1,400 jobs equal.
We'll get you some detail on that.
Provide some context for me to Preet. What has been your experience with other major projects where vendors were an integral part of the transaction or enterprise? And let me just say for the record that to Irma Lopez Salter and to Councilwoman Squillen, but for her voice over the last many weeks, we would not have known that we needed to figure out a way to keep the vendors whole. So, with that, just share with us for context purposes what your experience has been in other similarly situated mall enterprises.
Well, this is certainly an unusual situation, Councilwoman, to start out, in the sense that, you know, we're typically not in the business of closing down malls. We're in the business of populating them. You know, having said that, the, so the history of, you know, on a look-back basis across our, you know, 30 some, 32 malls, I can't recall having done a kind of mass exodus. So, that's number one. But number two, these arrangements with cart vendors are typically very short-term agreements, month to month, right? Now, now, I, and, but that doesn't take into account the fact that they are quite important to a, you know, to a property, right? In some cases, the operators, we consider them, you know, a vital part of the management of the asset. They watch over it for us, if you will, while we do. So, we've tried, in this instance, to do everything we could. First off, we gave a reduced period of rent towards the back end in the hopes of, you know, helping them, the transition out. Secondly, when we offered them locations in other of our properties in the area, and as I mentioned, we own eight of the 20 malls in the Philadelphia market. Thirdly, when the possibility came up that we, that they could relocate elsewhere in the concourse as a tenant of SEPTA, we donated over $300,000 worth of carts, or giving them the carts. The cart that they typically operate is our property. And lastly, we're actually helping with the legal administration to help coach SEPTA on how to enter into one of these kinds of arrangements. So, that's sort of a brief history of our approach to it, and I would say that it is unusual, but it's also the right thing to do. And the last thing that I think is, is to, as part of our homegrown program, which by the way, is specifically for residents and, residents of Philadelphia and businesses in Philadelphia, that doesn't mean across the bridge or Montgomery County, to provide opportunities for, for the residents and the business of Philadelphia opening the property. We're going to give the former vendors a right of first offer, if you will, I'm using a legal term here, and I'm not a lawyer, so that they really can, you know, have every opportunity to get back in if they want.
And so, right of first offer is the baseline criteria that will be used so that they can determine whether or not they want to continue with that experience, correct?
That's correct.
So that we know, we're both saying the same thing. With three, I have another question. Restaurateurs. So, could any one of you detail for me the process for raising awareness for minority-owned, women-owned restaurateurs?
I think as a part of the project, what is important about being involved in this at this stage is making sure that we're not only paying attention to construction, which is certainly a big part of this project, but it's also paying attention to the retail part of this as well. And so, as a part of the project, we talked about a food and beverage minority entrepreneur initiative that would reserve specialty space very specifically for that kind of retail. What we've done on other projects, and we certainly haven't designed all of the elements of the project, of the project yet, but certainly outreach and engagement, finding people who are already in the community who may have an interest. We usually use sometime joint ventures as a way to get people involved, but first and foremost, it's all about information and making sure information gets out very early and way ahead of, before we need it. And because we are here pre-construction, and the community gets a chance to hear what the opportunities might be, now you're talking about having a couple of years to really put together something very substantial to be able to participate in the mall.
Excellent. And so, given UAC's track record, what is Preet's experience in allowing and encouraging and actually ensuring that women and people of color get restaurateur-related opportunities in the other malls where you do business?
Well, I think, I think our track record is a good one. We, you know, we own Mall of Prince George's in Washington DC, where we have significant, if not a majority, of representation of the food court vendors are minorities and people of color. I would add to that, we also found a, a street vendor in Washington DC who sold books by or about African-Americans. We moved him into a kiosk in the mall, he opened up in the kiosk, we then moved him into a store. Today, that operator has eight stores. So, we, you know, we are keenly aware of it. And that, you know, it's, to a certain extent, it also adds to the flavor of the property.
Absolutely.
I mean, I could take you to a mall in Idaho, and you would think you were at a mall outside of Philadelphia. They're very homogeneous, if you will, they're very ordinary. And that's not what we want to do with the gallery. We also want to put in a taste of Philly. You know, instead of doing a normal food court that where you could see in any suburban mall in America, to look at a taste of food court, we're even talking, and one of our members of the leasing team, Haley, is actually sitting back there. And we're looking at sort of an indoor food truck court, right? Where we populate it, and these would all be local vendors. So, I mean, I think we see this, we see it as important to the gallery for a whole host of reasons.
Okay. Thank you. So, in addition to the wrinkle that's been outlined by Councilman Good, what other hurdles have to be overcome before full consideration by this body that, that you may be aware of, that we may not be aware of, that has been raised already?
One question.
To any one of you?
I think we've articulated them, and this is obviously a very complex set of resolutions and ordinances here, but we've talked about, we may have some living wage issues and interpretations that we talked about with Councilman Good, that we have to look at. We've talked about the vendors. Those are the two that I was aware of going in.
Okay.
And we have to get the contracts done with the vendors through SEPTA, which we're committed to.
So, with that then, not knowing President Clark's timeline for this, to the extent possible, frame out what the 1,400 jobs equal.
Yes, and we'll take care of that for you. We'll submit that to the chair.
Okay, I believe that's it. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, you done?
Oh.
Thanks. Sorry, still had your light on. You good?
Let me just find out, is it, want to make this comment so that it's exceedingly clear. There's a deep interest by members of this body that the vendors, that you intellectually figure out how we keep the vendors whole. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So, there are a couple of loose ends with respect to amendments, based on earlier conversations and conversations during the course of the hearing. How do we want to address that?
Let me suggest that, or recommend, that if, we will, we have time now between this and final passage, which I think we said was June, middle of June, right?
Yeah.
Something.
So, this is what, this is the time, this is what we have time to do.
Right. So, I would like to get these issues codified and worked out.
Well, you know, without, my preference is, speaking for me personally, is to have this concluded prior to the first reading, because the amendment's on the fly, the first reading and all that. So, technically, it's my belief, and if I can be corrected, we have the ability to do the amendments leading all the way up until next Wednesday. So, that's why I'm asking, how do you want to resolve this? Because there are a number of issues that are outstanding that we've been discussing.
Okay.
And do you want to get them done now, tomorrow, whatever, leading up to next Wednesday?
I think, I think on the, on the issue of the vendors, I think we, I think we know what to do here. We just need to offer up an amendment that puts it in language that should go fairly quickly. On the issue of-
Why don't we do this? We take like a 15, 20-minute recess?
Yeah, sure.
And then, we can discuss how we're going to proceed today.
Okay.
All right? So, we'll do like a 20-minute recess, and we'll be right back.
Council President.
Screamberg, I think we've actually concluded the questions for, you all may be done.
We're getting to the next testifiers.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're okay with you all. There were no other questions at the time when you concluded your remarks. Thank you. Next up, we'll have Controller Bukowicz.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark. As is our office's obligation under the charter, we've reviewed the PIDC analysis of the tax increment financing proposal. Preet and its partner, Mazerich, proposed to invest $325 million in transforming the gallery into the Philadelphia fashion outlets, with the $55 million in TIF financing, as well as financing from the Commonwealth. According to PIDC, and we validated their figures, the benefits of the proposed TIF include $194 million in total new tax revenue during the 20-year period of the TIF, including $58 million to the city's general fund, $41 million to Philadelphia's municipal retirement system, and $96 million to the school district of Philadelphia. The proposal will involve 2,165 construction jobs during renovations, with a total of 3,950 permanent jobs in the renovated mall, 14 of those which will be new jobs. Includes a commitment to 25 to 30% inclusion for women and minorities among tenants of the new mall. We think, under virtually any realistic scenario, the TIF will provide substantial economic benefit to the taxpayers in the range of $150 to $194 million in new revenue to the general fund, Philadelphia municipal retirement system, and the school district.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Bukowicz. Are there any questions of this witness there being, thank you very much for your time. Next up, we will have the following witnesses, Ms. Irma Lopez Salter, Glenn Moyer, Rodney King, Barry Zinstein, Titus Tessama, Nacima Yula, and Nabil and Salma. And please, I apologize if I butchered anyone's name.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Afternoon.
Thank you very, very much for keeping us in your life. I just wanted to share some of my concerns and my observations. One of them is the TIF is supposed to eliminate blight and create economic development? I thought the gallery was already a mall. You know, I thought it was an upgrade project. I just wanted to, you know, I don't know who could answer that, but I just wanted to make that as a note. And I thought it would a TIF that you can displace people, and we was displaced by our lease not being renewed. And we was given six weeks to let us know after we pay Christmas rent, which is four times the regular rent. So, and we got an extension, a very short extension, because I feel as though they misled our council person by saying, oh, they have to leave because we're ready to do construction. We just came from the gallery, the gallery is open. We're not there. We could have been making money and feeding our family and paying our bills.
So, what was your last date at the gallery? What was the last day?
February 18.
18, okay.
Right. Our lease was, our last lease was December 31st. They told us November-
14th.
14th, that they wanted to meet with us so they could inform us that they wasn't renewing our lease. Christmas rent, like I said, goes four times the regular rent, and they usually do Christmas, decorations, have a Santa Claus, do projects for the kids. We didn't get none of that, so they just took our money.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay. Let's see, we could have been there, okay. Now, oh, and I just want to, you know, again, push the issue where all our clientele, and the clientele in the future will be coming from. We have commuter rail station, the subway, the New Jersey- We have commuter rail station, the subway, the New Jersey line. So, our, all our clientele is and will be always from the Delaware Valley besides our guests that come to visit Philadelphia. So, they was talking about the wage taxes. Now, I saw 23,222, 28,500. That was on page three in the wage taxes portion. And to me, this is what I always called the undercover subsidy that we never talk about and that is welfare, because now these families, because they don't make that much money, have to go get food stamps, have to go get medical, maybe housing, and in some cases even wages because they don't make enough depending on the size of their family. So, I know that that's an issue, so I just want to keep it on the table as an issue. And I know that we're not worried about the union jobs because I know this is a union city, so we're going to get our jobs. We just have to make sure that our monitoring of the minority piece stay in place. Thank you to Ms. Sher- Charmaine. To Charmaine. But we just want to make sure that whoever monitors those numbers, you know, we just want to make sure that they're monitoring every trade, you know? And then it's like, if the numbers are not there, I'm not sure if I saw anywhere where they will be penalized or will be a fine if they don't have the numbers for that month. I don't know how you're going to monitor. And I understand that there's going to be an oversight committee. Well, I hope that a small business person could be on it. I hope that, oh, I know. If anybody that's going to be on that committee has a city title, and when Mayor Kenny comes in, that title is given to somebody else. Would that person leave? Is that person by their name or by their title?
Okay. Check it out.
So, I'm going to, oh, wait. Okay, with the homegrown retail development pilot, I know that we talked about negotiating with that, but in the wording that I have in front of me, until I see the new wording, it says space consideration could include vendors and merchants. So, you know, I know that we negotiating changing those words. And then the board, there's going to be a board of directors for the nonprofit new organization. Is there going to be minorities on that board? And is there going to be any business, small business people on that board? So, we could all know what's going on. And I know that this was a typo in the diversity practice on page six. You broke down provide the race, gender, and residential nature of, and then it goes directors, and it talks about 11% African-American, 34% women, and 30% Philadelphia. In management, 14% African-American, 86% women, 14% Philadelphians. General workforce, Latino nations was added to that, but it wasn't added to the directors and the management. So, I know that that might have been a typo, so I hope that they correct that. And again, oh, and the board just paid, and one of the things that they was talking about that they're allowed to accept gifts. So, I don't know nothing about this. I wanted that to be brought up and discussed.
Okay.
So, so now I'm going to list-
We changed the law here. We're not allowed to, we're not allowed to accept gifts here.
Okay, well, according to these papers, that's the bylaws.
All right.
Yeah. Oh, and they could get loans. So, if they do, I hope that they get high interest loans, so we could make some money off of that.
All right.
Okay, so I want to let some of the other merchants speak.
Thank you, Ms. Salt.
Okay. Oh, okay. This one, this one.
State your name for the record. My name is Rodney King.
Thank you.
Not the Rodney King from LA, of course.
Glad to hear that.
I just want to say, it's been hard for me for the past six months, you know, not working in the gallery. I haven't found any work at that time, so I've just been maintaining. But after hearing the testimony from Preet, I understand that things looking forward for a bright future for me now. So, what I was going to say, I had to switch my whole, you know, I had a note prepared to actually just bash you guys, but now, now I know we got a bright future ahead of us now. So, I look forward to doing business in partnership with you guys. And one more thing I'd like to say, can't we all just get along?
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
My name's Faris Zenstein. I am the owner of Connected Wireless. Basically, I feel the same. I am looking forward to the future. I'm looking forward to working with Preet, and I'd like to thank City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hold on a second. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Excuse me. I'd like, I'd like to request that, you know, first of all, thank you for staying organized on this stuff. It would be important for us to get the numbers of what your loss has been in the last three months. My colleague, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, talked about making you whole, and we want to make sure that when we find you a temporary location that is built into what whole means, what it means to us versus what it means to you. So, to the extent that you can make that available to Councilman Squiller, that would be helpful in, in your temporary relocation and then going back into the gallery. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Go ahead, sir.
I present my name-
Let me ask a question. We have two colleagues teed up. Do you want all of the testimony before your questions? Okay, thank you.
My name is Mohamed Nassim, and I'm from West Philadelphia, and I have a business in the gallery mall. Before I come in here, I have so many things in my mind to talk about that, but after I hear all testimonies and city council supporting us and all of you guys, and plus Preet is agreed to, willing to give us a back to the gallery mall. So, I guess I'm happy for that, and I appreciate all of you to help us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony.
Good morning, good afternoon, Councilman Clark and other members, distinguished members of the City Council. My name is Jahad Ali, and I have been, was asked by Ms. Irma at the beginning of this process. She brought it to my attention and asked me if I could give them some insight on this fight. Those of you who don't know me, I'm a regular attending down here at City Hall, and I believe in counsel. And I know a lot of times, a lot of things, as the Councilman Green, Good pointed out, a lot of things you thought were occurring that you authorized didn't occur. Like today, here we are, he's on his way out of office after so many terms, and he's finally got an admission from the person that's the oversight administrator that they're just, they're just boilerplate things. And really, so once we drill down and really get the results of all the efforts, and I've said it numerous times, everything that you, all you distinguished members of council have fought for, the minute that we get out that door, somebody else is telling them, "Oh, don't worry about that." We don't interpret it that way. It's not the way that we see it. We'll just deal with it when something comes up. So, I wanted to commend Councilman Squiller because, Councilman Squiller and Councilwoman Sanchez, because from the very first meeting that they had, Councilman Squiller was like, "Look, I don't know the subject, but I'm going to try my best to represent y'all." And that's really all we ever asked for. We just asked that those who are elected represent our interests. And so, today, we, I learned two things that I'll never forget. One, the admission from the third-party certifier that, yeah, those numbers are boilerplate. And then there was a comment made by Mr. Cardona, excuse me if I mispronounce his name, from Pret. He made a comment in a paper that said, "Leaders aren't people who have power but who empower others." And that really was something that he, and I was looking for, for years. And he informed me, that's really, that seems to come out of South Philly a lot. So, he said, "That's the South Philly creed." And if you look at it from all the people that we know, that that's really, I mean, that's their foremost thing that they say. Of course, those of us in other areas of the city, you individually might feel that way, Councilman Clark. Maybe Councilwoman Blackwell, Blondell, and them individually might, but as a theme, like he said, that's their mantra down there in South Philly, and they practice it. We only need to look around. We only need to look at our next mayor. But at the end of the day, what I wanted to say was this. This group is a group of hard-working American entrepreneurs. They need some help to figure out whatever they're going to memorialize and write in. So, Ms. Santa, Ms. Irma had reached out to an attorney to get an attorney to help them. They need to have, be able to retain an attorney to deal with the attorneys on the other side, whatever's memorialized. And, you know, we keep talking this thing about numbers. I've heard a lot of names mentioned on these boards, but when you look at it, we're in all in a difficult situation because, you know, it really comes down, who's the smartest guy in the room? And unfortunately, most times, there's always somebody on the opposing side to counter that smart guy. But in this case, the very people that are putting this deal before you, they are, they are, they are interested parties in organizations that we rely on for advice. We can't, we can't discount that. We have to acknowledge, I don't know if, who all the members of Pret are. We know Mr. Cardona, but I'm not sure about Walter DeLazio, Rosemary Greco, Leonard Korman, Donald Marzati, Mark Pasquale, Charles Pezy, John Roberts, and Ronald Rubin. Mr. DeLazio's name is familiar to me, if that is the same person I'm thinking of. He's the chairman of PIDC. So, if he's the chairman of PIDC, and also Mr. Greenberg is on the board of PIDC, so we have all these interested parties that, you know, who's really, who really can say, "I'm an interested party, and I think that we should consider," instead of saying that, "Oh, we just getting all this public subsidies." We had a value. In 2013, when Pret bought it, they said it was 250 million. So, at that time, these very people sitting here were paying taxes as taxpayers. So, they had an interest in the tax that they paid. They were part, they were part of the city's, the city's asset. So, we have an asset that we're paying for. At the end of the day, they should be able to get the return, some investment. Mr. DeLazio and his, and my rich, who, by the way, is a billion-dollar company, so if they're putting an investment out and they expect the return, that's why we're doing all this, to give them a return on their money, what do the citizens get on our assets? We get zero return because at the end of the day, the people that we would expect to be looking at a development budget, cash flow, a pro forma, after-tax benefit analysis, all those people are interested parties. So, we're at a disadvantage. And I don't fault any of you here in City Council because this is not your expertise, but we need to acknowledge factually that we have, there's some people that are interested parties, and we need to look at this a little different. But going forward, I would like to just recommend that this, to Mr. Cardona, that everything that you are saying that you're going to do for, in return, in regards to OEO participation, one small hidden fact is that anything that you hire your third-party certifier to, their information becomes proprietary. And Councilwoman Blackwell, I don't know how many times we had meetings to say, "Where are the results? Where are the reports? What about the jobs?" And then the third-party certifier say, "Oh, I can't release that because it's proprietary information." So, what I would ask Mr. Cardona to do is appoint a representative from our end or to agree to counsel that those reports will come over to our chief clerk, who is one of the best in the nation as far as transparency and getting information out. That's the least we can do because then we as citizens, those of us who are concerned, if we find out something, we can come to our elected officials and make it, to make an inquiry into that. And the other thing about the group, you can't give them a option to purchase something without tying it to something. There's no need to give them a false promise. If two years from now, and I tell these members of the group, "Well, your rent is $3,800. I gave you the first option." What can they say? Because I would say, "I gave you what you asked me for." So, it has to be tied to a number that they can pay for it. The council in this matter, I think you should get a consultant that is not an interested party that come in and represent y'all as you go forward because this is complex subjects. I can see no reason why council didn't have, why the city of Philadelphia didn't have the master lease itself and sublease it to Cardona and Pret and the rest of them for 99 years or 69 years or whatever. God willing, I probably won't be here. I'll be on the other side. But at least our children, and that's what this is all about, that our children will benefit. So, at the end of the day, Councilman, other distinguished members, Councilman Squiller, I really respect you. Councilwoman Sanchez, I respect you because you could have just pushed us under the rug. You could have just said, "Look, this is a done deal." Those of you who looked at basketball game last night, Golden State, everything lined up for them. They couldn't do nothing wrong. They hit a ball, and it went in the basket. So, this is lining up for Pret. All we want you to do is do something so we can get a return. And if these are our founding members of our local economy that hung in there and they're, they're there, we should let them ride that benefit out on all behalf of us. We should give them the right that once they're named in there, that they can pass that on to their children because that's really what it's all about. But it's easy to do, but it's not easy if you don't have an informed person to help you. I'm not the person. I mean, I just know a little bit because I've learned right here in this seat. I've learned by listening to Councilman Good, Janie, Councilman Clark, the attorney up there, Christmas, all y'all. I've learned all that I know today because of being here. But I know that we can't go, we can't go anywhere forward without a written memorialized promise. And I'm not doubting anybody. I doubt Mr. Cadoza, I mean, I don't doubt Mr. Cadoza. I like what he said because what he said is something I'm going to make my mantra. Leaders aren't people who have power but who empower others, and I'm asking you to empower this group. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Salt, are there any, any other members to testify?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Say your name. State your name for the record.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nassima Yola, and I am speaking on behalf of my former kiosk in the gallery, which is called Midnight Over Medina, and had almost for last 15 years. I am a mother of four children, a housewife, and a homemaker. We established many wonderful relationship with people who travel all the way to the Philadelphia, which is called priceless relationship, and our loyal customers who are citizens of Philadelphia. All these years, the income from this kiosk, it helped my three children to go to their colleges, two boys and one girl. So, after losing this kiosk, I'm suffering financially a lot, so I have to get the extra loans to pay up their college tuition fees, their transportations, their lunch cost, and et cetera, and feeding my whole family. So, so please, we are losing our ability to stand up, and since their tuition fees increasing every semester, so this kiosk is the one, this kiosk is the main goal of my family to support. This business may call poor merchant, but this is an honest truth. This kiosk is the financial backbone of my family. So, please, look around. Still, you will see the Old Navy, the Burlington Coat Factory, Pay Happ, and they are the large companies and already million and billion dollars corporations. So, I'm just trying to help my family survive and help all my children graduate from the college. And I'm here, who can understand my position, please. I'm asking all of you to help to get my kiosk back, and I can help my family, and I can support my children and their tuition fees and feed them and pay their bills, et cetera. So, I'm really thankful, Mr. Councilman, who, and all other, everyone who spoke for gallery, and they say, "It's a, it's a good opportunity. We are going to, we got hope that we're going to get back our kiosk in future. We have passed priority." So, thank you so much for, for your best, I mean, best working with us. Thank you, everyone, again, and thank you so much for your time and patience. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
I think that that's the end. I just want to, I don't know if I made this point, but about when we go back to the gallery two, three years from now, I wanted a number to go with it, like, you know, don't- two, three years from now, I wanted a number to go with it, like, you know, don't, don't let me come in there and then you say, oh, the rent now is $8,000 a month. You know, so it's like, you know what we paying now? Let's do like a number, 3% a year. It takes two years, that's 6%. So my rent should be 6% and then it could go up eventually, but at least let me come in with a number. Don't let me come in and say, I kept my word, I called you first, but it's $8,000.
Right.
Okay, so thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And as you know, small businesses matter. And I just wanted, I wish I could give everybody that supported us a T-shirt, but Councilman Squiller from District One is my councilman cause that's where my business was, that's where the gallery is. And I know that he knows small businesses count. So I think that he's the honorary T-shirt. This is your shirt so you can let all your friends know that small businesses count. Okay, and thank you so much.
Hold on one second. We have a couple of members, I don't know if they wanted to ask these witnesses questions.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Councilman Squiller?
Yes.
You're Tito.
Thank you, Irma, and thank you for the shirt. I appreciate your passion and I have to say that, you know, this was not an easy process for anybody here. This was probably the most complicated process I've had to deal with in council for three and a half years I'd been here. And I learned a lot through this whole process with, with Preet, with the RDA, with PIDC, and everybody did a whole lot of work and, and the small business guys. And to sit down and, and work with you and talk to you and see what your concerns are to how to try to reach them, understanding that your livelihood was at stake and what mattered to you, understanding that. I apologize for taking so long to have this temporary place up and running and, you know, sometimes things are out of control, but in a way, I'm still responsible to make sure that happens and we'll do everything to make that happen. We're hearing in the middle of June, but we will stay on top of that to see you guys up and running the temporary space until this project is done. And also happy to hear that Preet will agree for the first option for the current kiosk vendors to go back into the gallery. But during this process, I know a lot of people were offered additional places to go and other gallery and other malls. But some people like to stay local and work locally. And I think that was important and the message that you had brought to us was that, you know, sometimes we always, we pay particular attention to minority businesses and making sure we get them, but a lot of times, we don't pay attention to the local Philadelphian-based businesses and Philadelphia residents because they're the ones who live here, they're the ones that pay taxes here, they don't want to pay our real estate taxes. And it's important for us to look out for them. And I think you made that very clear and I think we need to make sure we emphasize that on all projects, including this one and other ones moving forward. So I want to thank you for your advocacy and what you have meant and looking forward to continuing working with you through this process. Again, I want to apologize for the length it's taken to have a temporary spot up and running for the vendors, but knowing that we will continue and you gotta keep emailing and calling and nagging and whatever else it is you need to do till you get this done. And I want to appreciate all your effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I just want to say, 90% of our vendors live in Philadelphia, so we give you all our money. So I just want to let you know that.
We appreciate that. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilman Squiller's remarks go precisely to what I wanted to underscore, that you are local businesses who want to feed your families and honor up all the taxes that come with that kind of enterprise. And to Councilwoman Sanchez's question, the, the numbers, I'm, as you provide the feedback on the hard numbers, I, I would be curious to know what you started out with, the total number of vendors? Those vendors that have gone on to other places, what that number is, so that we know what the net is?
Okay.
As we look to trying to keep you hold. We need to, we need the full picture.
Okay.
Where we started with vendors and where we are now.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I want to thank you for your testimony.
And thank you so much.
Appreciate it and we look forward to continuing working relationship. We're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to testify on these bills or resolution? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't know that.
Good.
Please state your name for the record.
Sure. Yes, my name is Glenn Moyer. I'm from West Philadelphia and I'm here to testify against all of the ordinances and the project. No one should really worry if you've tried to make sense of any of the numeric information in these ordinances, as I did, and found that you couldn't. It's impossible with the information in the file and the proposal is designed that way. I first became aware of this gallery project when I saw the newspaper report about the short notice of evictions to the vendors, many of whom just spoke, and the closing of parts of the gallery. I also noticed the mention of public investments, substantial public investment in this project. And of course, I recognized a familiar start for a new round of what is pejoratively and correctly called corporate welfare. So last week, I attended the first public hearing that I could on this matter at the May 19th City Planning Commission meeting, where I publicly requested information, and this is the quote of what I asked for, access to all documentation breaking down the use of all public money. And all documentation breaking down the contributions of the two corporate partners. I was astounded that the attorney for the corporations, as well as Commissioner Greenberg, repeatedly stated that everything is in the ordinances. All the documentation that leads to these numbers that are being presented in the ordinances. Well, this seemed completely absurd to me, but since I had only seen two of the six bills, I had to accept this dismissive response and I thanked them. The reporter who reported this also was only aware of two bills, including the main one, the 15038. So the next day, I obtained the complete file from the chief clerk. At that point, I was able to confirm that the answer I received at City Planning was completely untrue. Let me repeat, the untrue answer was given both by the commissioner and the attorney for the developers. None of the numbers in these bills are supported in any way. Neither the methodology of any analyses nor any data was accessible to the public. And yet, I was told it was all contained in the bills. Well, as such, this entire proposal is based on blind confidence. We know that word confidence because it also is the root of con, con man. It's not credible analysis. These numbers are completely unsupported. Now, I have over a decade of experience conducting medical and behavioral healthcare research. So I do understand the difference between valid research, credible analyses, and unaccountable, unsupported, unsupported marketing literature. That's what's in these bills. That's what these numbers are. Yesterday, I contacted the Office of Rob Duboe of the Department of Finance and requested the review of estimates, which they referenced that they conducted, as well as all information about the cost-benefit analysis, which I assume the developers provided, so that I could review that documentation before this hearing. Joanne from Rob Duboe's office knew nothing about this review and I didn't receive any follow-up call or email, as I was told I would, about receiving access to that. One person in one of the councilmen's offices told me to file a write-to-know request, which of course, I would not get that until this was already approved. All right, if I have time, I'd like to go into some of the specific things in the text of the bills that allow you to reject these out of hand and just say it's time to look for a new proposal. The 2165 construction jobs that we're told will be created? Nonsense. Absolute nonsense. This is a discredited method of reporting construction data. I'll come back to that. Presenting estimates as specific numbers instead of as a range.
Sir, one second.
Yeah.
You asked a question before you started referencing those numbers. When you said, if you have time, what kind of time?
No, if I have time, I'd like to talk about.
Well, I'm gonna ask, what kind of time are you looking to have?
Just, just a few minutes right at the end. I was told maybe three to five minutes I could have.
Yeah, it's supposed to be three minutes.
Right, right.
Okay.
The other thing are the estimates. That data is presented as exact numbers with a silly disclaimer that says, the numbers are useless. This is a trick to suggest that, it's used quite often to suggest that, well, you know that the number is not exactly that number, but maybe it's one-off. You have estimates of estimates of estimates that get you these numbers. And it's all based on this 60% occupancy that was claimed to make it blight. All right, let me first talk about this tax increment financing in general. Tax increment financing has been studied, it's been around for a while. The results of these corporate subsidies have been studied. These subsidies are designed for blighted areas and assume that no other development could reasonably be assumed to occur for the next 20 years if this particular project doesn't occur. That's nonsense. Eighth and Ninth and 10th and Market Street are not blighted. Again, the only thing that seems to be referenced about the blight is a 60% occupancy rate, which is a very, very troubling thing to be basing this blight on. You know, was this a created situation, which I think we'll get to. And of course, the complete solution to this blight is the promise to take the occupancy rate to 93% over the next 43 years, where we're going to have to make payments every year totaling $175 million. We had some discussion of that, although of course, nobody can really understand what they're talking about. Blind confidence and excitement for this proposed solution is often called magical thinking in my field. All right, this 60% occupancy rate is the starting point for.
Sir, how much longer? I'm not trying to rush.
Two or three minutes, two or.
You said that like a couple of minutes ago.
Okay.
Because I mean, you were.
Well, that, okay, the 60%, let's talk about that.
No, sir, how much time do you, because I.
May I have two more minutes?
If it's truly two or three more minutes.
How many if I use.
Well, sir, you've been talking for 15 minutes. You're supposed to get three minutes.
I've been talking for 15 minutes?
Absolutely. Oh, go ahead. You're wasting, you're wasting.
All right, let me, all right.
I was just like for you to conclude. We get your point.
To conclude, to conclude. This proposal for massive public funding for a makeover of the gallery cannot be properly done without a review of all documentation and methods not disclosed. As it is, it's, it's just simply blind confidence we have to accept. I say makeover of the gallery because, you know, as you see, there are not, there's little actual new construction, as I heard at the City Planning Commission. All right. The, the analysis claimed in these documents, I have not been able to get public access to, which is just, it's, it's wrong. You cannot accept that. All of this enormous cost to taxpayers is being pushed without proper review and when simple alternatives have not been explored to boost the 60% occupancy rate. We heard the term de-teneting. Now, since everything is based, the blight and all estimates are based on the fact that we did not have 60%, we only had 60% occupancy. We have to ask, why do we only have 60% occupancy? How long has the de-teneting been going on? The, I believe, Preet said they own $250 million of the, of the, of the gallery. This doesn't sound like it's blight. It sounds like this is a manufactured issue or mismanagement. Either one would, is not a basis to move forward on this project. So I didn't get to explain the jobs numbers, which.
Yeah, if you can conclude your remarks.
Okay.
Really serious.
Is that number 2165 jobs created? Complete nonsense.
Okay.
Complete nonsense.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Need anyone else to testify on this bill? These set of bills? There being any questions? There being none, I want to thank you very much. This concludes the public hearing. We will go into the public meeting and we will recess our public meeting until next Wednesday at 10:00 a.m., June 3rd. I want to thank you all very much for your testimony.